Called the meeting to order at six thirty PM. It's like our first order of business is election of officers. So do I hear any nominations for chair?
I would like to nominate Kirk Scott for chair.
Okay, I guess someone in the hot seat.
Do I hear any other nominations for chair?
I wanna nominate. Oh, Rich, you're not doing this, are you? Well, if 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 you were gonna be a part of this, I would nominate you. All right. People can nominate themselves too, right? So. There's always that if you have a desire to take on a leadership thing here. That is that is allowable to nominate yourself.
Do I hear any of the nominations for chair? Once any for third time, any other nominations for chair going twice, no other nominations for chair nominations are closed. All in, do I hear a motion to elect Kirk Scott as chair of the Affordable Housing Subcommittee?
Oh, moved.
We'll hear a second. And discussion?
Other than I'm flattered for the nomination and thank you very much for that. No.
All in favor of electing Kirk Scott Chair of the Affordable Housing Subcommittee? Great, Kirk, congratulations. I'll hand the meeting now over to you.
Okay, so thank you for that. Now we are gonna have an election for secretary. Do I hear any nominations for secretary? I guess. Hearing none, I guess Jason, Jason, I'll nominate Jason Diebel as secretary. If you're. Willing. Okay, so I have a. Nomination for Jason Diebel and a second. Do I hear any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? With hearing none, I'm going to ask for a vote all in favor of Jason Diebel as secretary. Say aye. All right, let the record show that Jason Diebel is the secretary. So this brings us to the next third one, which is the agenda. I don't really know exactly what to do with this because. This, the setting a schedule kind of. Implies how much ambition we're gonna have and how much work people are willing to put in. To this, I mean, we could do, we could, we could meet like once a month, go over results and do that or. If anybody has any other ideas about what what type of schedule they'd like to see. I'm gonna throw it out there, throw this out there as as an open question. Does anyone else have any ideas about? When to meet?
The deadline is in July. So if we were to meet once a month for the next. Two, three, four, four months, five months. Would that be enough conceivably to get something like this done? I would say probably.
October is our deadline. July is the ninety days prior if we had to request the extension.
Okay.
And statutorily, do we have to set things for a public hearing? Or any other statutory requirements, Gary, that you can think of?
I believe we will have to have a public hearing to accept the the plan. We'll also have to get it to the Department of Housing. I'll have to check on all of those dates and those timeframes. I'm working on that now. And once established, I can let you know what I do have is Jen worked today with the clerk's office. On room availability. So if we want to meet in March. The main meeting room is available March seventh and March twenty-third, I believe, at six thirty. Thereafter, they have a variety of different dates in each month. Be happy to share those with you. For April eighteenth, May sixteenth, June twentieth. July eighteenth, August fifteenth, September nineteenth, October seventeenth. November twenty-first and December nineteenth. Obviously, that's beyond the October deadline. But I suspect it's an extension of time if we go beyond the deadline. That would bring us to the end of the year.
So you mentioned extension. Can you can you talk about that for a second?
Certainly, a- as the plan comes together, if for some reason we're not on track to get the final product. Before October thirty-first. Ninety days prior to that date, we can request from the Department of Housing an extension on the grant. In the grant, it didn't indicate or specify how long my extension of time is. I suspect. We'd be far enough along to give them an idea. I would, I would think that we'd be within a few months, a month or two of the deadline. You know, considering that we managed to put together a plan of development in a year's time, I would think we should be able to do this. Much quicker. It's a small scope. And we will have a professional consultant on board. As well.
Right, so let's, all right. Let's, you mentioned the consultant now, like there's there's some time constraints around that because. Like, you know, they're gonna want some time to get some work done and. Let's see, it's already February.
So the RFP requested that proposal be submitted by March fourth?
March fourth. So so you're asked the the co- the consultant. Who's the consultant? Who's the consultant?
We haven't chosen one. We requested, we went out with a request for proposals on RFP. Waiting to receive those back. The due date is is March fourth.
Okay, so.
Would this committee be reviewing those applications?
I believe statutorily, we have to have, it's like an open bid process, so we have to open them all at the same time so we can do that as a commission.
Okay, so we definitely need to meet for an open bid sometime in March. And they're due on March fourth, so maybe we say one date that we need to do for sure is sometime around then.
So checking with Jen, March seventh or March twenty-third, where the two available, the rooms were available for that?
March seventh is a Monday and it fits the schedule of Mondays for every date after that. March twenty-third is a Wednesday. So not that this is a really big deal, but. That would throw off the whole idea of Mondays.
Yeah, that it's just where the room, the main conference room where we can record this, i- it's available. There's not another commission meeting happening.
So it looks like all the other days are the third Monday.
Yes.
So March seventh was one day, which is a Monday, you said, right? Mondays. Um, so the twenty-third is what?
A Wednesday.
Wednesday, you like Wednesday?
No, I don't have preference one way or the other. I was just.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All right, well. If I, if I'm thinking about this, I think, I think, I think we should try to meet as soon as those RFPs are done. Like, as soon as possible, because given if even if even if the July, like, we would have to find something. And get it submitted in writing ninety days prior to October third. And you said that is what, July something, Gary?
Yeah, July, I think it'd be like July thirtieth.
July thirtieth, so we would have, we would, that would be our target date to have some revision. Right?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, if we could meet on March seventh, that's three days after. And then we could, we could notify the consultant, you know, who who would be awarded the the project. And get them going sooner than later.
I like that.
Okay. All right, well, we should, we should try to do that then. Do you figure, do you figure a turnaround time, say, so like if we did meet in March, like around the seventh or so? Hypothetically, and we picked somebody, and then how long does it take to notify them and get them actually to work?
Probably wouldn't, you know, do we notify them the following day? They'd probably start worse. I would hope within a week, depending on their schedule, obviously, but they're the ones making the proposal, so hopefully they're prepared for. What's to come. I mean, it's clear in the proposal, the due date of the project. So I think, you know, they have to, there's some understanding there that there's a bit of a time crunch, if you will. So I think the expectation is high.
Right.
So I.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand how all these things fit together, because it sounds like a, there's some moving pieces here. All right. So, okay, so wait, let's, let's say maybe we meet on the seventh. And. Select whoever, so that would be one date. And then do we, do we have like a month after that would be April? April, do we have something in April around the seventh or?
Yeah, the eighteenth.
Okay, so April eighteenth. And I feel like we should do some more stuff at that March fourth meeting besides just open the bids. Although, are we not wanting to get into the nitty gritty of what we're doing at each one of these meetings? Or are we just looking for dates to to meet?
Initially, I was just looking for dates to meet where we can. Probably work with the consultant, have them come in and meet with us. Periodically from time to time, or if we need to do it over Zoom, we can certainly do it over Zoom. If they're from out of state or something like that, whatever facilitates the the progress. But if we want just a regular meeting, we need to be able to tell the public when the subcommittee would regularly meet and they can expect us to to show up. Even with the the calendar quote set, well, we can cancel meetings and schedule special meetings so long as we post agendas within twenty-four hours. Of meeting. So we can have some fluidity.
Yeah. Are we allowed to do things over Zoom and are you available on Mondays, Gary?
Yeah, I have to make myself available for this. So yes, Monday's work for me. And Tuesdays are already kind of devoted to planning evenings and the only conflicts I have are the first Mondays of the month. I think, although this year, I think Wetlands is meeting on the first Tuesday of the month, so the conflict no longer exists there. So third Monday of the month works for me.
Okay. All right, so. One meeting on the fourth, seventh, and then do we want to try to pick up? Every month thereafter, or are you wanting to do just, are you wanting to do just the third Monday? Oh, I see your chat there. All right, thank you for that. That's helpful. Four eighteen, five sixteen, seven. These are almost month. Eight fifteen, nine nineteen, these are, these are available dates?
Yes, the third Mondays.
That looks like a schedule. March, April, so March, so we don't have.
The March dates aren't there, but.
But let's, let's say March, March seventh, which is like. That's like three weeks from now. March seventh, and then if you want to pick it up on. The four eighteen, four five sixteen, six twenty, I mean. I like all these, why not?
Okay.
Except for the twelve nineteen and.
Eleven twenty-one.
Yeah, the eleven twenty-one. We hope to be done, but whatever, I mean, we can. All right. So let's do that. I like that. Why not? Anybody have any comments or anything about this? Those dates seem to work for you guys.
Yeah, I can make them work.
Cool. All right, awesome. Awesome. All right, so that looks like, that looks like a schedule to me.
I just, we just need a motion, Mr. Chair.
Yep, I'm looking for a motion to. Set the schedule at, oh wait, hold on, I'm gonna withdraw that. Is six thirty good for you guys? Does that work? I mean, I could actually do seven, because like, you know, I get home, walk my dog, eat some dinner and. You know, catch, catch a little bit of email before I sit down here. So seven actually works good for me. If that's okay with you guys.
Yep.
Clear out the dinnertime hours, you know. The second most important meal of the day, so.
And I don't think these meetings will be terribly long, so it's okay.
Right, right, right. Okay, so that, that's all good. Let's say, okay, I'm looking for a motion to. Say seven PM on those dates in the chat box.
Motion, Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Producer. Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Miss Fairchild. Okay, any discussion?
That includes the March seventh meeting, right?
Yeah, I think, oh, you know what? All right. Do we have to amend our motion?
Tim, I would just amend the motion to include March seventh.
Hey, I'd like to amend the motion include March seventh.
Thank you for that. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussions? All in favor, say aye, aye. Let the record show that we have a new schedule. And let's see, that should close out. Item B of the new business, old business, none, next steps and assignments. So this is. This, I I feel like, I feel like. I feel like we need to to talk about what the next steps could be, and I don't really have a good handle on. What is required and what, like, because, because I feel like, I feel like Gary, Gary, you're like. Key to all this, and you would have a really good idea about everything. Do you, do you care to talk to this next steps?
So obviously, the next step is to select the consultant to move forward, which we'll do once we receive the the proposals. And we can review them. Following that, as part of our next meeting, what I'll do, as we already identified, we're gonna need to know our timeframes, deadlines. And when we need to hold public hearings, I suspect. If it's anything like the plan of development, we're gonna have to have like a thirty-day referral period prior. So I would anticipate having to build that in, but obviously, the the work that comes out of this commission, if we end and then forward it to the planning commission before. October, right, that would kind of be the the goal. We could possibly do some public hearings at the planning commission meetings. And that's really kind of my overview, not much I can get into in terms of the nitty gritty, because I don't have those details as well. So those are all in progress. I hope to make quick work of it for the March meeting and be able to lay out a timeline for the subcommittee, just to show that the milestone's being hit.
I think, I think we also discussed picking or inviting other members to join. And I believe there was kind of like a priority list, like maybe a member of zoning and honestly, I forget the others that people mentioned, but. Maybe we could set that as a, as an assignment slash next step for each of us or for those of us who have someone in mind.
Yeah, that's a really good idea, honestly, because. We wouldn't want to do any of this stuff in a bubble, like, you know, it's important stuff, what we're talking about, so I agree with that.
Well, why don't I send out a letter to, I mean, I think we, right here, we can, I think it was zoning, Board of Ed, Board of Selectmen. I I think we mentioned Board of Finance, but I'm not certain how integral they are at the moment. I don't know if there's any other commissions that may be, you know, like the.
The people have a lot of feelings about affordable housing. And when you deal with something where people have a lot of feelings, I think it's, it's a good idea to cast a wide net to get as much. Buy-in as we can, so I definitely think it's worth reaching out to the the commissions, even if they're not. The boards and commissions, even if they're not kind of directly gonna have influence, because they have wisdom, they have expertise, they have a community network they're connected to. And we're gonna probably gonna need to access that, so I would, I would encourage us to go big and even go beyond municipal government. I don't know where beyond municipal government, maybe like faith, community, business community, like, let's, let's really drink and find.
To get into that, they, you know, thought there. When we did the P O C D, we had a list of stakeholders that we sent stuff out to. The only other comment, and I agree with, I agree with widening the net and, you know, getting more people involved, and I agree with that. The only caution that I have is like, we're gonna get a lot of input back and and which is great. So there's nothing really to be cautious about from getting input, other than the fact. That we'll have to like process it all, right? And given we are on a compressed schedule here, that is, you know, and I wouldn't, wouldn't ever want to be like. Exclusionary in any way to to not allow someone to have a point of view. I'm just saying that. I guess be careful what you ask for, because I'm guarantee you, you are not wrong. There will be a lot of. There will be a lot of interest in this and incorporating all of that. Into. A plan by. By October thirtieth, could could turn into a tall order, so. But I think, I think all of the good ideas that we can gather are good, are important to get, so. Yes, I think, I think we, we had a list of the stakeholders, Gary.
Yes.
From the P O C D, if if you wanted to include them as a. As part of the distribution for this, I think that would be appropriate, because there was quite a, quite a list of people that we had. On that, on the stakeholders.
Sure.
And.
And then what I'll do is I can send that list out to the committee, and if there's anyone we kind of left off or. As David said, outside the municipal realm, we can reach out to them.
Right, so you got, you're gonna coordinate the the mailing of a, of a.
Letter on the committee's.
Right. The only thing is, if you, when, here, here's another thing we should talk about then. If you're gonna say, if you're gonna take the time to send out a letter of. Like an invitation or, you know, somehow inviting stakeholders. I think, I think we need to be clear on what we're asking for. So like, because people hear affordable housing and they'll just show up and vent about stuff, which is great, but we're trying, we want to, we want to actually. Have ideas, you know, so if if in your letter, you can kind of say. I don't know how exactly to word it, but.
Yeah, I I understand what you're saying clearly, because, you know, if we're caught reaching the Harbor Management Commission, for example, right? What, what role would we be asking them to play in this development of this plan? You know, it 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 may be that they kind of lean on the commercial marine industry and say, well. Here's a resource, so affordable housing in certain locations might. Somehow benefit that industry and as well as provide the housing that's needed for the people that work in that industry.
Exactly. I don't think there's any part of the community that really wouldn't have some interest in, in knowing. But channeling that into how to proceed in a, in a productive way, that's, I guess, my point.
There's a lot of good information too in this, this thing that was sent out to about. Social media and stuff like that. We get a lot of people's input that way too.
Right, right, well, we have to be careful on how we. How, how we present what we're doing, like, we want to just make it clear and, you know, not only. Not only advertise to certain groups of people, you know, it should be like an equal kind of, everybody. Everybody knows about it and everybody's interested. Everybody has a chance to.
Well, what we're asking, I think, is is a, it's almost like a year-long, not quite, but a year-long commitment. Maybe we could start with a letter to the boards and commissions and hope that there's someone who wants to join us for that full measure of this. And I mean, we all have networks and communities that we are connected to, so maybe we could start in our own personal groups, reaching out to people we know. Would want to be productive members and want to stick this through and want to sit and hear from the public at length. You know, because I imagine difficult conversations and. You know, it would be good to to have someone that you know can can process that and deal with that ahead of time and and reach out to them and see if they want to get on board. Rather than just, you know, open it up to the world. We could open it up to the world and perhaps that is the most democratic thing to do. But thinking about actually getting this thing done, there is a, there is a kind of person who would be willing to sit in a chair and listen. And process and and meditate on this stuff, and I think we all know people like that in our lives, so maybe we could practice that.
Kirk, when you did the, when you wrote the P O C D in twenty twenty, there was a section on housing in the P O C D, the list of suggestions. You call, we based it mostly on questionnaires and written materials from the state. We didn't, we get any feedback from any stakeholders that were that housing, do you remember?
I don't have any of those records, but that is a good point, and that should be something else that we could bring forward to. Examine, maybe, maybe on our, maybe at our March meeting, we add that to the list of stuff. Because like, like, like Tim said, there's a lot of good stuff in there. And I think one of the things that we should be able to start talking about and how to gather, and I don't know if, see here, yeah, and. I don't know what, I don't know what the, what exactly the consultant is gonna do too, so. And and if we cannot duplicate the work that they're doing, that would be good. We should definitely make that information available to the consultant. And hopefully, they would take it as, you know, an input and carry it forward. But I think you're right, that would be something that everybody could review now, or, you know, before the next time. Because there, there is some good stuff in the P O C D, for sure.
Seven or eight suggestions.
Right, and there, there's the whole, the whole chapter, like, there's a whole section on it too, so I gotta refresh myself. Also. All right, so Gary, you're gonna come together with some, like a start to a thing, I think. I think, I think we should publish our schedule with this, with this. Invitation to whatever it is that we're inviting people to.
Yes, absolutely.
Participate, the stakeholders.
Yeah, I think I can, I I think I can get a generic enough letter that at least says, hey, we're looking for input specific to. Affordable housing as it relates to your specific interest.
Right.
Here's your schedule. This is one more meeting.
Yeah. And maybe cite the statute. And maybe cite the statutory requirement that we're required to do this for every, every five years or whatever it is, and, and whatever background, like, you know. You know, when, when we, when we did the P O C D, we had like admission statement kind of things.
Yes.
Where, where we, you know, included that and.
Yep, okay.
That's, that's. That's a, uh, that's a pretty big next step, so that's, that's good, thank you for agreeing to do that. Uh, any other next steps other than coming up with the schedule or the timeframe listing and. Solicitating input from the public. Gary.
Um, it would, I think it would just be critical to try to get that letter out by the end of this week, if not the twenty first, so that gives. Those other commissions time to respond, they're gonna get it in, in the early weeks of, of March, so they may not be able to attend any of that March seventh meeting, which I think would be okay. Because we're gonna be discussing some other items, but hopefully they could pick up in April.
Appendix A in this, uh, this document has kind of a rough outline, uh, page twenty seven, just says, design and carry out community engagement and communications strategies. Uh, but I think that's easier said than done.
Yeah.
Will be a first step.
We followed, I looked at that for, for our P O C D, we did a lot of those things.
Yeah.
Yeah, with, with the, I think if you look at the R F P, um, we're asking the consultant to help with some of those things.
Okay.
So the, and the R F P is available on the website, if you need to look at a copy.
So, okay, so I have more homework too. I have three pieces of homework. The homework is to read the P O C D and at least the section about, at least the section about affordable housing. Read this document that was, um, attached. And what's the third thing, dang it? So there, there's definitely two things there.
And I think the third thing was the, uh, just the letter from me out to the commissions.
Oh, the R F P, we want, I think.
Review the R, R F P also.
Just so we know what they're gonna do and, or we have some rough idea of what we're asking them to do, because I, I honestly haven't seen that myself and I apologize for that. Let's see, so that's an assignment. Anybody else have any other ideas for assignments? We talked about outreach, we talked about reading and like background information, the schedule.
It, there. Offers a resource of data, um, there's a tremendous amount of data out there.
Right.
More than any of us could ever process. I, I don't know, is one of you guys like really into statistics or something?
Yeah.
To start digging into that.
Right. Yeah, there is a bunch, there is a big body of knowledge for this too, so I'm not an expert in this by any means. Michelle, too bad, Michelle's not, um. Involved in this committee, because she, she, she seemed to really have a good handle on this stuff.
Yep.
Um, but anyway.
Well, we can tap her, we need to tap the resource and I'm sure she'll contribute.
Well, our commission's gonna get this letter too, and, uh, so in our communications that are next planning meeting. We'll probably discuss this, so, and that would be a good opportunity to. Pick everybody else's brain on the commission and, uh. I don't see what's going on, but I do agree that this, that, that suggested outline there, that's a good idea to the, you know, from this, this. Um, affordable housing handbook, is that what it's called? Yeah. So, all right, uh, Gary, anything else?
That's all we have for tonight, um. But we'll get working on the letter and, uh, reviewing that, the material that we have. And then hopefully, the next meeting, we'll be able to select a consultant and get some guidance from them, obviously the professional to help, help guide this as well.
Yeah. Did you get a sense, Gary, if there was gonna be a, uh, big pool of? Replies or responses to this R F P?
Um, I don't really have one. I did get at least one person email me, uh, regarding the due date, uh, it is March fourth. Um, I guess further in the document, uh, there's a, apparently a February date, um, so we're gonna post an addendum. On the state website that where we posted it, that, that the due date is March fourth and not the end of February.
Oh, man, people, people might have seen that and just said, ah, that's too fast.
Well, we'll post the addendum, but they should get notification if they're a part of that web service. And we'll also post it on our website and, and so forth. But that was unfortunately brought to our attention. This recently, so.
Date thing is only for the grant, are we able to file extensions for the actual plan, or would, would, would it just behoove us to just? Submit it with whatever.
Well, it'd be great if we can get it done and submitted with whatever changes we, we want to make, and certainly, you know, it is an update, it's not a complete overhaul, uh, in what we write, um. So that's obviously the, the most ideal, uh, if we have to request an extension, I believe you, we also submit a letter to the office of, oh, uh, policy and management. Indicating why, just like if this was the P O C D, we say this is the state why we, we haven't been able to complete it on time, and usually that's acceptable.
Right.
You have a valid reason, and in this case, I think we can justify this plenty, I can anyway. If maybe.
And one of the things, the, the way we left the P O C D off was like, you know. We could, we, we could change the P O C D at any time if we really wanted to, and that's kind of what this thing, I mean, we could change this too.
Correct.
And if we wanted to, it would just involve a bunch of, uh, meetings and public hearings and notices and. Right?
Yeah, I, I would say, we're, you know, we're also a little bit of ahead of the curve in that we have an existing plan, whereas a lot of communities in Connecticut do not, uh, and that hence the legislation passed, so. From that perspective, uh, that's just a positive.
Right. All right, well. Anybody else have any other thoughts or? Anything about assignments, next steps, or anything? That was all really good input, I appreciate.
You referring to the needs assessment, uh, in two thousand eighteen, that was. That's the document you're referring to?
I, I have not referred to the needs assessment, that should be something, okay, so who did that one? Who, where did you find this one?
I just saw in the references to the P O C D, I, I. The document you're referring to. Yes, two thousand, in two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, I, I, maybe Gary was referring to it, um.
Yeah, those, looking at some of the references on the P O C D. I think that's, I think that was Gary was referring to before the document that was sent out.
Okay, so that'd be another good one to look at if, if you have.
It looks like there's a lot of dead data on that one.
Yeah, the, uh, and we should, we should, well, if the consultants doing their, their. Doing their work, I would hope they would look at the P O C D and take those inputs, but we can. How much, uh, chance are for collaboration are we gonna get with the consultants? Is that an open thing or? How does that work, Gary?
As far as how, how the commission will interact with them?
Yeah.
Um, I, I would look at them as staff and hopefully, in the R F P, I believe. Uh, we asked for two public meetings with them. And I would anticipate that they would have to attend at least a handful of, of subcommittee meetings. As well, so. I would hope it would be a kind of similar to the joint land use study, I don't know if you recall, I mean, that was a little broader in scope and included two other towns. But we were able to work, I think, pretty closely with the, with the consultant.
Hmm hmm. That's good. All right, so I'm not, I, I don't have any other ideas for next steps or assignments, and I think. I'm hoping you guys would jump in if, if you had more.
Yeah, I just have that, the timeline, uh, we're gonna look into the details for the timeline, the public hearing. That's Gary, Gary's gonna pull together a letter by the end of the week. We're gonna look back at that list of P O C D stakeholders, who's, who's doing that one? Is that also Gary?
Yeah, I'll forward the committee, the stakeholders list, and that way you guys can let me know if, if there's anybody we should, else we should include. At while I prepare that letter, and then we'll just send it all out at once.
So we all need to be thinking about who might also be a good addition to this. We're, I'm gonna read the affordable housing part of the P O C D, those suggestions. And that's all I have, is, was there more?
Uh, probably read the R F P. And. What else, there's one more.
State guidance document.
Oh, yeah.
The Affordable Housing Handbook?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, cool.
That sounds like a good recap, thank you for that, um. Let's see.
I will try to send that list of stakeholders out first thing in the morning, so keep it, because, you know, if I'm, my goal is if I can get this thing finished by Friday afternoon and then the mail, that would be fantastic, but.
You don't, you don't know how to be sick, Gary, when you're sick, you're supposed to stop doing things.
Well, I've been working from home because I'm like pulling my hair out, and I don't know, you just get bored, sitting around, say, I can only read so many pages of. So many books before I start falling asleep, so. I don't know, maybe I should.
Do what you can, but I, I mean, we all understand if it takes a little bit longer than that self-imposed deadline, but.
Yeah, thank you.
Your work.
Yeah, reach out to anybody if you need a hand with anything.
Yeah, absolutely, will do, thank you.
Uh, let's see, so that's good, that's all good, we got good recap and. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Jason and Olivia. Thank you both, and, um, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, aye. All right. Like, uh, meeting is adjourned, the time is. Seven thirteen. Thank you, everybody, for, um, all your time tonight, and we'll see you on the seventh.
All right, I'm gonna stop recording now.